All right, we'll call to order a regular meeting of the Chisholm City Council for October 14th, 2020. Good evening, everyone. Margaret, could you take roll call, please?
Counselor Lance.
Here.
Counselor Fulton.
Here.
Counselor Vocki.
Here.
Counselor Varda.
Present.
Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Champa.
Here. Adopt the agenda. Counselor, mayor, I mean, councilperson Vocki has to leave early tonight. He asked if we could rearrange the meeting to take him up first under new business.
Mayor.
Appreciate it. What was that, Travis?
Mayor Champa, I do not have to leave. I am here for the full, full, full show.
Okay, you got back. Okay, good. So we won't worry about that. But what I'd like to do under the item with my first item, I'd like to look at posting for all the board positions when we do it. So that'd be the only change tonight and entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. Accept the agenda.
Support.
Motion by Counselor Varda, second by Counselor Lance. Uh, Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Vocki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Okay, the agenda is adopted. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to public participation. We just have one person tonight. We have Gary Choquist with Showman Consulting. He's going to talk about some exciting stuff with the Red Headed Bike Park in our business community that will be. So I welcome you, Gary. Good evening.
Thanks, Mayor. You want me just to launch into this?
Go ahead, launch into it.
Okay. Mayor Champa and City Council, thank you for a long week's time. My, I apologize for its length, but I feel like I need to justify how my background can help. A quick review of the four tasks. Number one, hold group meetings about mountain biking demographics, what mountain bikers and their families want, how Tioga and Cayuna are doing this right now, and why Redhead is a much superior site for events and races. Number two, host a tour of businesses in Crosby and hear from their owners about the impacts of thousands of mountain bikers coming to ride, eat, and stay, and how they've adjusted to meet this need. Number three, conduct one-on-one meetings with Chisholm business owners who want to learn more about how to accommodate mountain bikers and their families. And number four, begin a process to get an overpass built so riders can get from Redhead into Chisholm safely. I've done this sort of work before congressional levels, Congressman Overstar, and know it'll take collaboration in a long time, but I believe it's a key to making the connection between Redhead and the city. Further, it's been suggested to me the City Council would like to be me to begin working on these four tasks beginning next spring and continuing through the end of summer 2020. Let's think of this as option A, and I'm certainly would welcome that opportunity. I'll come to work whenever you guys want me to. But with all due respect, as a consultant, I'm going to suggest an option B. For this, we begin this education process now, or at least soon, on at least the first three tasks rather than wait till spring, and here's why. There are four reasons here. The current state of COVID will not likely change much in the next six months. My belief is we're going to be right where we are now, following social distancing rules, wearing masks, washing hands often, etc., next April. This will be our new normal for some time, so why wait if nothing about our daily life will change? Number two, after hearing what I say about mountain biking, some of your business owners may want to make changes such as menu additions, changing layouts of their spaces, creating more outdoor spaces, etc. If we wait until April to start this, I'm predicting some frustrated business owners who are going to feel they don't have time to make the changes they'd like to. Number three, MDC will have a shuttle van and trailer bringing riders and families from Redhead into Chisholm as soon as the trails open at Redhead, which might be mid-May. By delaying the meetings until April, the business community here will have a hard time responding to the riders' needs once the shovel gets going, and it's going to be very visible up and down the street on a regular basis. Number four, a majority of mountain bikers don't ride fat bikes, so can't wait to get out in the spring. There's a really high level of anticipation. They're so eager to get out after a long winter. With the rain-resistant nature of Redhead, riders will start coming to Redhead before a lot of the Twin Cities or Duluth and North Shore trails are dry enough to ride. If they don't get what they want at Chisholm, they may not come back, or if they do come back to ride, they'll just turn left or right on 169 and find places to eat or drink on their way home. So I'm suggesting option B might be to start hosting the business meetings using Zoom, as mentioned in my proposal. I can also do follow-up one-on-one meetings with all COVID procedures in place, with business owners who either can't figure out the Zoom meetings or are tied up when we hold these and simply can't attend. I've been coming up there once or twice a week since May. I'm impressed with the proactive nature of the city in regards to Redhead, but I'm concerned this proactive nature, when combined with what Stephanie brings to the table as the new economic development coordinator, is going to be squandered if we don't get acting soon. I think there are a lot of business folks in Chisholm wanting to get started, but I, I will do whatever you guys decide and look forward to the opportunity just to help in some way. Any, any questions I can answer while you're on the phone here?
Counselor, we're, we'll be taking this up later in the meeting, very shortly, actually, but any questions for Gary while he's on the line with us?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Gary.
Go ahead.
Gary, what are you, what would you bring to our community for the consultation contract? Can you give us a rundown of, I know you probably already spoke with the EDA, but just let us know and the people at home, the folks at home, what would you bring to the table for us?
So I've been involved in mountain biking in Minnesota for 30 years. I've, I've helped build the organizations that do the trail maintenance. I've run both the trail, mountain bike trail racing programs in Minnesota, and I've spent 22 years representing the bike industry, doing a lot of the same work in different locations all around the country, many of which are classified as, as, you know, great mountain bike destinations. And so I think that what's going to happen in the Chisholm area is similar to what happened on in Crosby-Irington. This trail is going to become very popular. I believe it's one of the best trails in the United States, and that's based on my experience. And so as people read more about it, see videos, it goes viral, they're going to start coming up here, and they're going to be looking for specific things that they're used to getting already at Cayuna and Tioga. Mountain bikers like beer. They like craft beer. They like certain kinds of foods. They, you know, little things like, many mountain bikers are going to leave Redhead to get on the shuttle to come into downtown Chisholm. A lot of these mountain bikers have these recessed cleats in their shoes, and so when they walk on a floor, if it's not the right kind of floor, it's going to leave these little indentations. So there's all kinds of little things about mountain bike riders and their families, which apply to the Chisholm business community that you guys probably don't know. And so that's what I'm offering to bring is a perspective on what's worked elsewhere around the country, what's especially worked at Cayuna. Whether, whether you guys like it or not, Cayuna and Tioga are essentially your competition in terms of accommodating mountain bikers. They've figured out how, both at the trailhead with accommodations, changing stations, repair, bike repair stations, that kind of thing, how to cater to mountain biking, and so that's, that's meant increased users. I mean, think about this, at a place in Crosby where nobody rode mountain bikes really before 2011 were opened, now there's more than 40,000 people that come annually to ride there. 132 new jobs have been opened up in the area. It really has created a significant social and economic impact for the area. I think Chisholm can experience a lot of that same. I think the growth would be a little bit different. Cayuna is two and a half hours from Metro. Redhead is three and a half to four hours, so it's going to be a different growth pattern. But people are going to come, and I really think if you want them to come into town, you need to know more about what they, what they're getting at Tioga, what they're getting at Redhead, what they're used to getting from traveling around the country experiencing mountain biking. The mountain biking population of Minnesota has grown substantially with the, when he introduced the High School League, and so there are, I don't know, upwards of 250,000 people riding mountain bikes seriously in the state, and with the trails really clogged in the metro area, they're looking for new places to come and ride. It's a great demographic. They want to travel. They're highly educated. They make pretty good money, and we've seen that this, this will occur. Will it occur in Chisholm? I think it can if you accommodate them.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Go ahead, Travis. Just a clarification for, for Gary, and Stephanie can, and Adam can jump in here if I misspoke, if I misspeak here, but I think that the concern was just a four-month period with the EDA and that not being long enough. And so that's why we wanted to extend it through.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Through then, through the summer of next year, because there was some concern about business owners not during this COVID peak we're at, or whatever you want to call it, not wanting to meet. And so by extending it, we give them more of an opportunity. And if that's incorrect, I think that's what we, we talked about, Stephanie, so.
Travis, are you saying Bill would want to, we would want to start right away, but, right?
Yeah, and we would just extend the contract. We were asking that it be extended through end of summer next year, I believe.
Counselor, anything else for Gary?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have a word with Gary.
Go ahead, Jim.
Hi, Gary, how are you tonight?
Good.
As you can ask anybody on the council, I am the one no vote for three years for this bike trail.
Okay.
100% of the time I voted no. So I just want to tell you, I hope that between you and Stephanie, you can prove me 100% wrong.
Okay.
Because I'm not a believer at all, so just wanted you to know.
Okay, so, so first off, I ran into some guys like you down at Crosby-Irington.
Okay.
And I had, I had a guy tell me, ask, how can them mountain bikers spend any money with shorts don't even have a pocket? Right, right? And it's funny how many of the people in Crosby who were adamantly against the trail are now very strong proponents of the trail, once they figured out how to make money off it. And so I'm suggesting that is going to happen here necessarily, but it could. And part of my proposal is to introduce you to people just like yourself. There's a guy on Crosby named Vern Lewis, who's a longtime Crosby resident, was a realtor, was a blackjack dealer way back in the day. And he told me in my face, he said, I, when we, when you guys opened that trail, I thought, big deal, nothing's going to happen. I just don't see where it's going to happen. And then Vern realized, as more mountain bikers started showing up, and $50,000 pickups was $20,000 worth of mountain bikes hanging over their tailgates most days through the summer and on weekends, and that people were in town looking for homes to buy, second homes to buy, and empty storefronts to build new brew pubs and ice cream shops and different forms of hospitality. Vern went and found property and opened up what's called Red Rider Resort. So Google Red Rider Resort sometime and see, he's packed all the time with this really unique kind of rustic lodging experience. And he says the mountain bikers are an ideal client. They, they clean up after themselves. They don't party. They're tired from riding. And on their way out, they book their next reservation back into Red Rider. So I hope that down the road, what Stephanie and I can produce will turn your perspective around a little bit.
Good luck.
Anybody else? Any other questions?
Gary, Mayor Champ, I just, just a comment. I completely agree with you. The sooner we get started, the better. Like you said, the park's open right now, and like you said, come spring, they're going to be chomping at the bit to get here and ride. And I can tell you, we've already seen where we don't have enough for the riders here already. So I think it's, we need to do it. We're, we're this far down the road. It's time, we got to finish, we got to finish the deal. So.
Okay, well, I'll wait word from you guys, and I'm ready to go whenever you want me to.
And you got a nice picture on Red Rider Resort. I'm just looking at it.
Yeah, he, Vern is a pretty persuasive guy, and it's worked out great for him. He just also opened up a tavern in town called Trailside. So yeah, that's how this stuff goes, so we'll see.
Counselor person Varda, he don't even know that he's going to have a resort and a bar coming up. He's nearly retired. That's good. So, all right, Counselor, if there's nothing else, we'll move on. Gary, we appreciate it. If you want to stay on the line and see how it goes, it's one of our first items once we get through the report, so.
Actually, I'll just, I'll, if you, if nobody has any questions for me, I'll step off, and you guys can just get back to me. I appreciate it again. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, Counselor, we'll move on to our reports. Counselor reports will start over with Counselor Varda. You got a report tonight, Jim?
Just a short one. The Park and Rec Committee actually met face-to-face this past week, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. Nice to talk to other adults face-to-face, so that's it.
Thank you, Jim. Counselor Fulton, report today.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. I'm just going to read it off my computer here. So the Chisholm Iron Trail Campground is now online with our new reservation system, camplife.com. You can access the reservation system from our City of Chisholm website, Chisholm Iron Trail Facebook page, and the Chisholm Iron Trail website. And Larry put a good reminder out on Facebook that the campground is open year-round for the folks who like to camp in the winter. Also, the Chisum Community Education is holding a driver's training classroom instruction online class for any students who will be 15 years or older by January 1st, starting Monday, October 26th through November 6th. And you guys, if you, anybody's interested out there, you can call the Community Education Office at 254-1431. Also, the Chisum Public Library is curbside service Monday from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM, Wednesday 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and Friday 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and the phone number there is 254-7913. Also, the Chisholm Chamber is still holding their shop local Chisholm promotion, which is really awesome. I see that there's some counselors out there and some people out there that have gotten their Chamber cash. So you purchase $25 in Chisholm cash and get $10 in Chisholm cash free. And it's for a limited time with a total of 300 Chisholm cash certificates, and the City of Chisholm did help sponsor this. So let's get some business into our community, or monies into our community. And you can also purchase them by calling the Chamber office at 254-7930, or you can purchase them on the Chamber website at chism55719.com. Also, there's some employment opportunities in our community. Range Center, Inc. is looking for residential program instructors and also full and part-time LPNs, or, yeah, LPNs. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Counselor, anything on that? Just a comment. The curbside recycling, I mean, curbside library picking up books sure seems to be going well. I mean, if you sit there, there's like a lot of cars coming through, so that's good. Counselor Vocki, report tonight.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I just wanted to say my, give my condolences to the family of Bob McDonald, who passed away this morning, if you haven't heard. So condolences to his family. He was a big part of Chisholm. To April's point, I did talk to Shannon this morning, and they have sold 281 of the 300 available Chamber cash bucks promotion, so there's 19 left. And then part of the agenda will be she's looking to do another one with that. Stephanie and Bill, to put on your radar, I just, before I logged on here, I logged off a Community Foundation, Chisum Community Foundation meeting, and we need to fill out an application for the Chisum Community Foundation. They have decided to grant the EDA the remaining balance of their fund allotment for this year to distribute to businesses that had COVID problems or to help local businesses. So we need to fill out an application and get that to them. So a big shout out and thank you to the Chisum Community Foundation for that. Lastly, the committee met this afternoon on the nuisance parking ordinance that was in discussion at our last meeting. And Brian and Vern and Mandy, feel free to chime in if I miss, if I say anything incorrectly here, Jim, too. So the committee has asked Brian to come up with an ordinance that has a shift in structure that will move from a strict limit of vehicles to a standard that will include a permitting process. We're looking at what's called an expanding parking license, so we'll set the, the number of vehicles, and then there'll be a permitting process from there. Mandy has agreed to house that permitting process. It is irregardless of frontage. That, that the number of vehicles will be irregardless of frontage. And you'll apply with a plan in a hearing. You would go through the same process through the Planning and Zoning Committee. And I think that's pretty much the highlights of what Brian's going to be working on. Brian can hop in and, and talk a little more about it, too, either now or on his report, but I'm done. That's all I got.
Counselor, questions for Travis?
I have a question. So Travis?
Yeah.
So no matter, so a person can have a junkard if they want, then in front of their house, if they have the permit, is that what you're saying?
So no, what's going to happen is we're going to put, I'm just going to throw out an example for you. Like if we say there's two vehicles per lot, say, it's irregardless of your frontage, two is the number. If you want more than that, you have to submit a plan and a, and a permitting process to Mandy, which then has to go through the Planning and Zoning Committee to be approved.
So you're not going to, so there is no, they can have more than two cars, they can have four, five, six, seven cars, is that what you're saying? Or whatever in their yard, as long as it's approved by the planning and zoning?
Yeah, so they would have to have a plan, and Mandy can speak more to that.
If it helps at all, just to let you know, it would be a public hearing, actually. All the neighbors would be informed. It would be a public hearing, and then there would be conditions put on that permit and timeframe conditions as well. So, but it is a public hearing, and the whole neighborhood gets notified of it.
Good, because that was my question, if they were going to, if that was going to be part of that process, so that's perfect.
Yep.
Sounds good. Thanks. Thanks, Travis.
Yep.
Travis, just a quick question, Mayor Champ, but is there a, are you, a candidate forum coming up?
Yeah, there is. October 29th on Zoom.
Is there a way to watch it? Have you heard or anything?
My understanding is that Shannon is going to share it on the Facebook page the day after. Bill, is that right?
My understanding and talking.
This is Terry here, if you can hear me. We're going to be broadcasting the forum live on Channel 13 and also on our YouTube forum.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Okay, that's, that's all I had. I was just curious. I, I heard Tracy and I have been talking, and we heard there was one coming up. I just hadn't heard any additional, so. Counselor, anything else for Travis?
I have a question for Counselor Vocki.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Hey, Travis, how you doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good, so I just have a question about the whole parking thing. So if I have, just throwing out an example, five drivers in my household, and they all have their own vehicle, I have to have a permit now to park those other three vehicles on my property?
Mandy, I'm going to defer to you on that one.
No, you would just have to apply for the permit if you were applying for more than what the ordinance allows.
So if my driveway is big enough to hold five cars, I can't hold five cars on it without the permit? That doesn't make any sense to me.
Brian, you want to chime in here? I, I believe you, you are allowed licensed and operable vehicles on a parking surface.
Okay.
And these would be vehicles that would not be located on a.
In the grass or whatever?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right.
Want to chime in on what you, what you, the direction you think you're headed with this thing? Brian, are they still on with us?
I, I am. And so Counselor Varda, to speak to your question, as that ordinance currently stands, there's a limit of four vehicles per, per property. And so, so what this, what this amended process will do is in, in special circumstances, or maybe not even special circumstances, it gives each property owner an opportunity to work with the city to allow more vehicles or more property to be stored at their properties, whether developed or undeveloped. But it also includes an aspect that takes input from the, the surrounding neighborhood. So what it does is, in essence, is it creates a system where the city will set a minimum standard and within each neighborhood, and with, by working with your neighbors and coming with a good plan to the city, each property owner can have an opportunity to have perhaps more than the minimum standard would allow by working with their neighbors and, and getting a good plan in.
Thank you, Brian.
I had a question for you, Brian. So let's just say that somebody's having issues with their neighbors. Doesn't really work for them, right?
Well, and the, the input from neighbors isn't the only factor that, that is brought to bear on the decision about whether or not the additional storage would be taken into place. But it did, it, the process would give each property owner a voice and an opportunity to be heard before the decision is made.
Counselor, anything else before we move on?
I, I just want to chime in and add, this was the best way we found to handle it, because it really will deal with each case on a case-by-case basis, because every case is so different and every neighborhood is so different. Definitely, the, the neighborhood will have an impact, however they don't vote on it. The Planning Commission will vote on the actual permit itself with the conditions attached to it.
Thank you, Mandy.
Yeah, and just, I'm just going to add one more thing. Part of your plan, you know, if you're going to ask us, if you're going to ask to store eight vehicles on your lawn, you need to explain why. That's the case. So that would be part of your plan, going to the Planning Commission for vote.
All right, we'll move on. Thank you, Travis. Counselor Campbell, report tonight?
Yeah, just a short one. Tuesday the 6th, I attended a police commission meeting, and then I didn't receive an ambulance report from Joe Sertich, so I'll go over that real quick. The ambulance service has been busy this last quarter. They had. busy this last quarter. They had 223 ambulance runs, which is up 23 from the previous quarter for a total ambulance runs year to date of 603. So they're pretty busy. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilor Lance, report?
No formal report.
Thank you, Councilor. All right, I just got a couple items. Just a reminder, you know, I've, I've looked over the whole process. I'm completely comfortable with early voting in Chisholm. I can't speak for other communities, but I've, I've, I've talked through the whole process with Christie and Bill and I'm completely comfortable with early voting and we would appreciate people that want to early vote to do so because it's going to help with the whole limited amount of people we can have in the building at one time during cold weather, which, you know, in November when we're voting. So like you said, it's a very secure system if you look at the process. Recycling area out in Balkan, I was out there to throw some recyclables out there earlier this week, Monday, I believe. Wow, what a beautiful job that was done out there. That's all I have to say. If you haven't been out there, it's, it's really nice. So money well spent. It's, it's really clean to get in and out, a lot of room to move around when you're in there. It looks like they have more containers. So I think that's gonna work good. So whoever thought up the plan did, did a very good job. Meeting with Bill, we, we did have a meeting with Bill last week, I think it was. And Vern just threw the number at them that he threw at us, that he figured a 3% increase on police protection. They're gonna take it up at their meeting, their budget meeting and get back to us. But they're very, very, very happy with what they received from us and they, and they may want to expand on, on some of the blight and things moving forward. And so there's some potential there for us to make a little more money on things like that. We also, we had Larry Fullstead with us and discussed just some things we could pair and share from a public works area. So that's kind of just an open door. We're going to discuss, possibly put some numbers on our equipment for rentals both directions. They actually have some things that we use that we may need to replace if we don't come up with something like a mutual agreement. So it'll all come to the council at some point, but we're, we're having those discussions as well as, you know, PSC, you know, approved having dumpsters put over there for you know, like our big 300s for, for doing a demo or for household throwing away and having us pick it up already. So seems like a good relationship there. Bonding bill, just a little bit about that, legislatures in session again. It's starting to look like they may actually put a bonding bill together this week. It sounds like they're getting close to having that discussion, finishing that discussion. We were kind of informed that it still looks like we have close to $2 million for our public safety building still in there. So that's good news. We hope it continues. Last thing, I might just mention Bob McDonald offer my condolences to the family. He was my teacher and for history teacher. He was my gym teacher, swimming teacher. Years ago, I was not a very good student. As a matter of fact, I hated school. And he told me one time, he said, you know, Champ, you're, you're like a mountain lion hiding in the weeds. I know you're gonna jump out and do this someday. So I'll always remember those words. I, he had faith in me when I didn't. So, you know. You know, and his record and everything he's done with his children, with his career as a coach in his community. I mean, it speaks for itself. You couldn't say enough. So I think that's all I have. Unless anybody wants to comment on that. All right, we'll move on. Building official, Mandy, report tonight?
I do have a short little report tonight. I just wanted to go through the third quarter numbers and let everyone know that a really big project just broke ground this last week. The new Aspen Grove Assisted Living Facility started. It's gonna be a great addition to the community. There, why my numbers went up so much for the third quarter, but as I did my third quarter surcharge report, I just wanted to state we're up to 122 permits yet this year. With still the fourth quarter to come. So that's very good. We have a total value of $4,534,486 with a total fee that we've taken in of $23,672. So we really are doing well. With these times, it's just really nice to have big projects like that in our community to keep everything going. So I'm really happy to say that they broke ground this last week. Other than that, I do have on the agenda a request to approve a resolution to accept more funds from IRRB for residential redevelopment program. I've got two burned houses, the mobile home in the campground, and then two garages on that. We were lucky to get that in before the end of the year to secure that last amount of funding. Other than that, that's all I have.
Council questions from Andy? Mandy, did you have any, any feedback on the, the apartment building owner up by the water tower that was trying to get in a variance easement, whatever, from the state of Minnesota? You ever heard anything else about that?
No, they're still working with the state. There's a right of way that goes through there and state's being very strict on what can and can't be built there. I know that the owner is still working with Department of DOT on that, Department of Transportation. I haven't had an update in a really long time. I know the council did go ahead and approve the, the extension of their, of their request because I know that we had some timelines limited on that purchase agreement, but I have not heard any updates.
Okay. That's unfortunate. That'd be a good addition for building. So.
Right.
All right, we'll move on. Economic Development Coordinator Stephanie, good evening. You have a report tonight?
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do not have a formal report tonight unless there's questions for me.
Council questions for Stephanie? All right, we'll move on. City Engineer report tonight?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Just a real short one. Back in July, the council passed a resolution authorizing the city administrator to apply for and receive grants from IRRB for our Third Street Northwest Project. The IRRB board did meet last week and they did send us, or granted us $250,000 towards that project. So at the next council meeting, I'll be bringing forth the agreement for approval and execution. With that, that's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Jim, what were you hoping to get on that?
I applied for $350,000 when Bill and I had met with Chris Ismail, our local rep, earlier this year. The formula last year seemed to be about one-sixth of the project cost was what they were applying for in grants. And so as a result of our total project costs, which construction costs plus the overhead was going to be about $1.9 million, I was thinking we'd be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $325,000 rather than $250,000. But I don't know if they just had so many grant requests for so much money, so they had to distribute it. I did respond to Mr. Ismail this morning and, and did ask that question if the formula changed or, you know, what had changed since last year's. But I have not received a response yet.
Okay. Well, we certainly thank Iron Range Resources for the grant to start with. So every little bit helps. Council, anything else for Jim before we move on? All right, thanks, Jim. Public Works Larry, report tonight?
Hi, everybody. A few things. Thank you, Councilor Fontaine, for your work with Camp Lake. If it's on my list, I like to push that every chance we get at the campground. Things are going very well. We've had some into winter requests from the construction workers over at the XL Powerline Move, just between the Mitchell Bridge and Chisholm. So that's great. And then some hunters, deer hunters coming, bird hunters still, ATVers. So that's great. That's some revenue that we haven't really seen before. So that's exciting and good. Then the EV, electric vehicle charging stations are ready to go live in the Tom and Jerry's parking lot. Thanks for all the support on that and for Councilor Vaki to really help move that forward. We think it's a nice addition with the up and coming vehicles that are due to be released very, very soon. It's my understanding that Ford, the F-150 will look basically identical to what you're seeing on the road now, which is usable and a little more appealing to people in our area. So we're looking for, looking forward to a little more traffic on that. And we think it fits well with the bikers and stuff like that as well. The east entrance sign, I've gotten a lot of feedback from most and all of you. I appreciate that. It really is a beautiful sign over there. It just really is. Just a nice, nice, nice entrance to the east side of town. And then I have a little, I have in the council packet is a, it's a little bit of interesting news for everybody and good news. And I'm gonna save that for last. The hiring process, thank you to Margaret and, you know, Bill, frankly, everybody else for getting us through the hiring process. It's a little more difficult than I'm used to, but we're getting through it. We have one pick starting next week and the one that we got for that, I believe it is. And then at least one casual next week. The auction, the city surplus and equipment auction ended yesterday and I'll have a report for you in the future. But again, I'm excited and, and shocked almost sometimes with the pricing we get with do bid out of view there and they're so local and they do such a good job. So we appreciate that. They did YouTube videos of the equipment and stuff and they really showed people the potential. So that really gets it out there and you get better bidding and better pricing. And I would, I would repeat Mayor Champ's conversation about the view old discussion and I work with Balkan frequently as well. The folks out there with the recycling center, the, the folks that show you around out there are just the coolest people. I really enjoy stopping out there and visiting with them. And then John White and the crew out at Balkan Garage have been great. Dirk, one of the supervisors there, we helped them with a little sewer problem there at the community center. And besides Bill, we're working with all of our surrounding communities there. And then last but not least is the garbage rollout. We're really excited about. One of your new garbage trucks in the background there, we had to send, we received both of them. And then we do an in-service inspection and a little training and we found a bunch of things that were incomplete and wrong. I'm not overly surprised with my past history employment and stuff with new trucks. You would think that they come off a lot and they're just perfect and you can drive and everything's fun. But that's just not the way it works when they go through several or multiple vendors and upfitting, you know, these originally semis coming out of the plant and then you put, you make them into garbage trucks or dump trucks. So anyway, they did get sent back to St. Paul. We're really, really hoping on one to get back next week for our new garbage rollout. And most of you, all of you received a generic map in your utility billing. I apologize that with the COVID, you know, administrator Manny said it many times, things are just, it's just crazy. You can't communicate, you can't have meetings, you can't. We were gonna do YouTube blast, we were gonna do senior center invites and question and answer. We weren't able to do any of that. So I apologize, you know, for any misinformation, but we're gonna fight through it. It's gonna be a great system. We're gonna save everybody money. It's gonna be a compliance system. And we're really, really hoping it goes well and just fight through it with us and we promise you we'll get into winter. A little bit of scary forecast there. I don't even want to comment yet. I see a Councilor Varda down there smirking, which just gives me the chills. But we really need to get through this garbage rollout before we see the lights up. And we're really hopeful. So with that, questions, answers?
I got a question. This is Tracy.
Hi, Trace.
So if we don't get one of the trucks back, if we don't get one of the trucks back in time, what are we gonna do? I mean, people are gonna want to use those garbage cans right away or?
Yep, the same process. It'll just take us a little bit longer to roll out. I talked to you a little bit about this week about opening up some overtime. And I talked to the vendor and they're willing to go 12 hours a day to get it. It'll be just a little bit slower process, but we're really confident we still get it done in the, in the time allotted. And that's all next week, Monday through Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Larry, just comment. I could talk to you about this outside the meeting, but I'm really looking to you really keep a pulse on our, our, our couple, two or three employees that are out on disability that may or not come back. We, I mean, we really have to, you know, keep up to speed on that because if for some reason they're gonna be out for longer than we expect, we gotta know because you're gonna need to help. And we're getting into the worst time of the year for you. So.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mayor Champ. It's, it's a struggle. And then this year with COVID, I'll give you a small example. If you want to have a little procedure done, you know, you have an inflamed knuckle for say, you know, you have to take a COVID test four weeks, four days before and then you have to quarantine for four days just so you can have the operation. Otherwise, you would have normally worked the whole time. But that's just not this, not the case this year. So everything is just a struggle, but I appreciate the support on that and we're gonna fight through it.
All right, thanks, Larry. Council, anything else, Larry?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question or two for Larry.
Great, Councilor.
Hi Larry, how are you tonight?
I know it's the most no question, Councilor.
No, actually, the first, the first question is, like Councilor Campbell said, if we don't get one of the trucks back, our old truck can pick up the little cans, right?
Yep, correct. Yeah, we're gonna be good on that. This will be a slower process. That's what we're figuring.
Okay. Well, then the second question is, do you have the guys ready to get up early? We're supposed to start getting snowball 11 o'clock tonight, so.
I know it's coming. I know it's coming. We do have a sand truck available. You think our mechanic Pahuli and Gage Lustick for jumping in the shop last couple of days. We'll actually have both sand trucks available by the time we go home Friday. We have one, one ready to take sand and spread it if we need to right now. We don't think, we don't think I'm on a snow day where the roads aren't frozen yet, the grass is still green. So we don't expect that to stay, but there could be some slippery conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Larry. Moving on. With the resignation of our fire chief on the line tonight, we have the Assistant Fire Chief Chris Masu. He's gonna give us a report. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Yeah. Okay, good evening, Mayor, Council, City Administrator, City Attorney. Just a short report. We have had 125 calls through the end of September so far. It is above what we were last year. We are looking at trainings coming up, but we did send Adam Lance and Justin Olson to low angle rescue training down in Redwood Falls, southern Minnesota. And that is all, you know, to do with the Redhead Mountain Bike Park. And hopefully we get this training up here next year. Adam can go into more details about it, but I heard it was very good training. October is fire awareness month. This year's focus is on kitchen fires, especially cooking fires. They are the number one way we are starting fires in our homes. Couple of things, don't leave food unattended. Always use a timer when cooking or simmering things. Use a lid to smother grease fires. And it's getting that time of year. Remind everybody, change their batteries for the smoke detectors, the CO, CO alarms. I would also like to thank Larry for giving us a heads up when there's smoke testing last week, week and a half. We did have eight calls for smoke tests where people got worried about smoking their basements. But otherwise, everything went fine. So thanks, Larry, for that. And that is all I have at this time.
Thank you, Chris. Council, any thing to add or questions for Chris? Two tongues here tonight.
Hey, Chris. Councilor Vaki here. Just wanted to say thanks for stepping up and helping us out during this time.
No, no problem. Thank you for all the support you guys have always given us.
Okay, we'll move on. Thank you, Chris. Library Supervisor Katie, are you on tonight?
Mayor, I do not see Katie on the call tonight.
Okay. Move on. Please, Vern?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have a formal report for the council tonight.
Council, anything for Vern? Thank you, Vern. Rec Director Kami, report tonight?
Just a real quick one. Good evening, everyone. The skating rink building, the shell is up. It looks really great. I'm really excited about it. I don't know if you've taken a look. Right now, the electrical is going in. I don't know if you've taken a look. Um, right now the electrical is going in and then we'll finish the interior and get the heat in. And just a reminder, we have applications are due for the skating rink attendance by October 30th. So get your application in. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. I did see the bill and I seen there's a roof on it now, so that's nice. City Attorney, report tonight, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Tammy before we go to Brian, please.
All right, go ahead, Jim.
Hi Tammy, how are you?
Good, hi Jim.
Um, is the power gonna go aerial or be buried to the new building?
Aerial.
Buried?
No, aerial.
Aerial, okay, thank you.
Yep, like how it was before.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, a good question for Tammy. It's, it's for applicants we're looking for, right? Correct?
Up to four, yes.
Up to four? Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we'll move on. Brian, report tonight?
No formal report, Mayor, but I am happy to field any questions the council may have.
Counsel, anything for the attorney tonight?
Hey Brian, I got one thing for you.
Go ahead, Travis.
Um, can you, so, is there any possible way, do we have any grounds at all that we could maybe talk about the Ironbound situation with them being down there?
Um, yeah, there, um, we can discuss that. Um, there is, um, my understanding is they're still down there. We continue to follow up. Uh, we continue to get the response that they're doing everything that they can to, to collect the, the items that they still have down there and, and vacate that space. Um, it may come to a period very shortly here, uh, where we may want to talk to them about just some other options that may be available. Uh, but I, I don't want to get too much further than that, um, uh, in, in the open meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Brian.
Go ahead, Jim.
Hi Brian, how are you tonight?
Doing well. How are you, Counsel?
Good. Um, I have a little information for you about something from the movie studio. Uh, the camera is back on the Iron Range and the person who has it would like to get ahold of you to see what he should do with it. So is it okay if I tell him to give you a call?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Brian, I'm gonna ask you one more question, but this is a pretty, it's a pretty gentle one. So, uh, do you believe there's any possibility that this could be considered rentable time because they're still in there? Um, as in, you know, they haven't left. We couldn't do anything else with it. I, I get it that we're in a COVID and they don't have to leave, but they are occupying the space from our side of the desk. So I was just curious, because at some point we're probably gonna have to have this discussion about money's owed.
That, that is a, that is a good question, Mayor. And, uh, the simple answer to the question, the question that comes directly from, uh, the COVID guidance that we're receiving is, while we are limited in certain things that we're allowed to do, uh, with rented space at, at these points, um, anytime, even while you're subject to COVID restrictions, it does not alleviate the requirement that rent be paid. And so that may be an avenue to explore.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Brian. We'll move on. City Clerk, Treasurer, Administrator, Bill, report tonight.
Mr. Mayor, the items that I, I had of somebody has already mentioned. So, um, with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Counsel, anything for Bill at this point? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This is your list of bills that came from Eileen, uh, about five o'clock today. You should be on your email. Communications, which are the Housing and Redevelopment Authority minutes, Park and Rec Board minutes, Police Commission minutes, Second Quarter 2020 Police Department Report Minutes of the Previous City Council Meetings, the September 23rd, 2020 Regular Meeting, the October 7th, 2020 Special Meeting, Payroll and Overtime. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion as Counsel Campbell.
To court. Counsel Campbell seconded by Counsel Baki, was it?
Yep.
Any, uh, discussion on any of that? Okay, Margaret, would you take a vote on the consent agenda, please?
Counsel Lance.
Hi.
Counsel Thornton.
Hi.
Counsel Baki.
Hi.
Counsel Varda.
Hi.
Counsel Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi. Okay, that consent agenda is approved. Uh, unfinished business. Bill, CARES Act funding, uh, remaining in what we're trying to do. I'll just let you talk about the different items you have in front of us.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, on page, I'd like to begin on page 18 of your packet, please. The, the very top item is just an update on, um, on, at the September 9th meeting, uh, you approved a $100,000 of spending that, uh, was designated for 50, uh, grants at $2,000 each. Um, and this is just an update that there were 46 applicants that qualified. So 92,000 has been paid out. Since then, there's been a couple more that have come in. And so, um, we'll look at, um, taking care of them. So the first item is just an update on the 100,000 that was allocated to the 50 $2,000 grants to businesses that applied and that qualified. The next part, um, is an update on the funds that are unallocated. So it said current, it says current CARES funds unallocated, $63,765. And then the next line has total remaining amount of CARES funds. You can see that increases by 8,000. Where that 8,000 comes from is yet I first talked about that instead of $100,000 initially being paid out, only 92,000 was paid out. So the total remaining CARES Act funds are 71,000. If we pay those other two applicants that came in, that would reduce that down to 69,000. The other items, um, that I'd like to put forth for council approval this evening, uh, starts off October 14th, spending recommendations. Um, the first item, uh, and these are coming from, uh, our consultants, is a remarketing of safety precautions taken by the city and local establishments for safe reopening, $7,272. And that would be a bill that would come from the Chamber of Commerce. And underneath the chamber, it lists, there's the bullet points, there's one, two, three, four, five bullet points that I'm not going to read all those. You can see what they are. The next item is election safety, um, precautions and notifications. Um, and this one, I'm, if you want to make a note, I'd like to propose that we move that one out of here because, uh, later on in the agenda, under items one and two on me, I'm going to be talking about an election funding grant that, uh, we will receive, um, if you approve, uh, us receiving the grant from the county. And so that grant would cover the election safety precautions, the notifications that, that are on here. Um, the next item listed in bold are the two temperature checking smart tablet stations. Uh, this would be for City Hall and the library for when the point, uh, in time comes, when, when we're able to reopen, that, um, we would be able to screen, uh, people that enter the facilities. It's $5,090. Um, the next item is Grinder Brothers Cleaning Service, which is the electric static spraying of the purchased cleaning products. Um, at the September 9th meeting, when, uh, a large, um, number of items were approved, part of that was the, um, the chemicals, the disinfectant that when you spray, it's long lasting on, uh, the surfaces. I have obtained all the material safety data sheets on, uh, the items that we are currently purchasing, that the spray. Um, for example, on, on, on this spray, I'll give you one example. Um, during the primary election, we had to wipe down, after everybody, after somebody voted, we had to wipe down physically each voting station. With this spray and the long lasting effect of it professionally applied, um, we will not have to do that during the general election, which will save a great deal of time with the voting and getting people through quicker. Um, and then that covers other buildings. So at some point in time, we're going to open a senior center of the library, the city buildings. Um, uh, this would be an ongoing process. It's not a one-time, um, item. And then some reusable face shields that the city workers can use. So, um, so the total of those items is $29,449.84. Um, but I'd like to pull off that $1,347.84 because that, I'd like to propose that later in the agenda under that, um, while we're going to accept a grant, we can pay for that with the grant money. So my, um, recommendation would be to approve $28,102 of, um, our CARES Act funding, which is everything listed here except for the election safety precautions and notifications. Um, this will leave approximately in round numbers still above $40,000. That is, um, unallocated that we'll want to spend at the next meeting so that we get the money spent by November 15th, the deadline. With that, Mr. Mayor, any questions?
Counsel Thornton, did you?
I was just gonna make a motion, um, for $28,102 for the spending recommendations.
Okay, Counsel, want me to motion? Is your second for that?
I'll second that, Counsel Campbell.
Counsel Campbell seconded. Bill, just a question. Um, you know, when, when the, uh, our EDA did the $2,000 grants for businesses that lost COVID-related stuff anyway, and they gave out a lot of the grants, which is a great thing. I, I'm, uh, I'm so happy our EDA is this, is, is, is the way they are because they did a lot of great things during this COVID to help our businesses. But one thing that kind of fell through the cracks that also struggles in these times were some of our nonprofits. And is there, and I know that, that grant, that $2,000 grant couldn't go towards nonprofits. But I think, uh, you know, one of them that tried to apply was the Chisholm Skating Club. They didn't have a skating show. They lost basically all their funding for the year. And, you know, had all the planning in place and everything when it happened. I mean, is there any way to help? And that's just one of them. There's probably a half a dozen that would fit into that category. I mean, is there any way that, is there any possibility of trying to help some of these groups?
Mr. Mayor, my understanding in, in, well, first of all, I just want to mention that, that was you, the city council, had actually spent the, you know, the 100,000 bucks. I mean, the EDA was involved. I mean, it was a partnership between the EDA and, and the, in, in, in the city council.
Correct.
Um, but what the consultants had mentioned to me is that for the nonprofits to apply to the Chisholm Foundation, because apparently the funding that Counsel Vaki talked about earlier about filling out an application to obtain the Chisholm Foundation funds that aren't spent, um, that's something that I'm going to make a note and we're going to need to look into because, um, the foundation maybe has different guidelines or there are funds that they received that different guidelines. But that's what the consultants had mentioned to me, that even though they, they weren't eligible for the $100,000 of funding that we had, that they should apply at the Chisholm Foundation. Do you happen to know, did they apply there for any of those, those funds? Do you happen to know that?
Oh, no. I think the only thing they had applied to was for that $2,000 on skate. Uh, but in, in, you know, because they're nonprofit, they were denied. So there was probably others that Wayne had told me that, that, that had happened. So.
So can I jump in on that?
Go ahead, Travis.
Okay, um, so I can partially answer that. So the Community Foundation did receive a COVID grant through the Minnesota Community Foundation, which houses all of our funds and stuff. So the skating club can apply to the, um, Chisholm Community Foundation COVID fund. Cause there's still a little bit of money left in that pot. Second thing is the $31,000 that I referenced in my report is not COVID-related. It's money that was allocated for us to grant out this year, but it's not tied to COVID. So when it comes to the EDA, anyone can apply for it. It's not specific. It's just because, I mean, technically speaking, it's almost leaning toward a nonprofit because that's who the Community Foundation grants out to. So that $31,000 that I referenced, they could also apply to that once we have that program rolled out and Stephanie does her magic with it.
Okay, well, it's good. It sounds like there's some options there. So that's, that's good. You know, I don't know what other ones, you know, I know that the gun safety, you know, that the sportsman club that does gun safety and everything. They, they didn't have their fundraisers this year either, you know, which is all their money. So I mean, there's probably a number of them that, uh, that are big and, you know, huge for our community, but they, we're kind of limited. Okay, so that's good. Um, Bill, anything else on that? We got a motion support to spend the money. Uh, how are we coming on the, uh, the engineering for City Hall and are you concerned we're going to come in over budget? We should be sitting on that 40,000 or how do you feel about that?
Uh, the architects were back in the other day for the, the second run. There were concerns both here at City Hall, um, the, the two areas in City Hall and the library. I certainly say concerns, I, it, the proper word is probably, uh, suggestions or comments, which, um, the architects say that they, they very seldom make everybody happy on the, on the first draft. Um, so they were back in the other day. They expect to have drawings to go out, uh, for bid on Friday and the work to begin, um, as soon as possible. Um, uh, you know, once those bids come in, they expect like a week and then, uh, they're going to get busy and we get to work. So. So as far as the dollar amount, um, you know, they're, they're still estimating it'll be about that $70,000 range.
All right. Counsel, if there's nothing else, we do have a motion support on the table to spend the recommended money coming from the administrator to different items. Um, there's nothing else. We'll have Margaret take a vote.
Counsel Lance.
Hi.
Hi.
Counsel Vaki.
Hi.
Counsel Varda.
Hi.
Counsel Campbell.
Hi.
Mayor Champa.
Hi. Could I have motion passes? Thank you, Bill. All right, we'll, we'll move on to Mandy. I always give her a hard time that all she does is tear buildings down in my town. But so it was nice for her to report that we're building a big building earlier tonight. But I'll turn it over to Mandy. Good evening, Mandy.
Evening. Um, in the agenda, you'll just find the resolution to accept funds from the IRRB Residential Redevelopment Program. And it is to demolish two burned single-family dwellings, two garages and the mobile home that's located in our campground right now.
Counsel, make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make that, uh, motion for Resolution 1020-76.
Thank you. Ordered by Counsel Vaki. Manny, how do we, remind me just one more time, then we'll move on. How do we know the dollar amount when the job is bid and then they give us?
Yeah, yes. So I, I go out for bids and I did receive all of the bids back and I do have the low bidder and that will come before council with the approval for the actual grant number when, and that should be at the next meeting. So.
Okay.
I, I go out for usually five or six bids and it depends on the time of year of how many I receive back. Um, this time I received three back. So they were three good bids and due to the grant. And due to the grant, I always have to go with the lowest bid.
Okay. Okay, we have motions for it. If there's nothing else, Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton.
Aye.
Counsel Vaki.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Good. That motion passes. Thank you, Mandy. Larry, a new water customer request. I know it's informational, but we, why don't you get everybody up to speed on this? And I know Bill has some concerns. You might have talked with him about him already. But we want to make sure we don't get behind the ball on this. But go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor Champa. And I I did have a conversation with Administrator Manny today. And and I appreciate his oversight, you know, of the whole system. And not just, you know, where I look at a lot of times is that initial, you know, that initial sale, that initial conversation and the potential. But we have, we have a potential new customer on the water side of Chisholm business, I guess. And and more and more in my department, but Hibbing Taconite is wanting to come aboard and be a water customer for the city of Chisholm at about a hundred thousand gallons a day. And it's something that for me is exciting because that, I mean, I can't ever imagine that, you know, I mean, you dream about it. It's it just really subsidizes all the city. I want to put out some easy numbers for you. We use about two hundred and eighty to three hundred thousand gallons a day in water. And our water plant's at about forty to forty five percent capacity. And when you can gain a customer that can take a hundred thousand gallons a day and we are able to put it out, it subsidizes the whole city. It subsidizes the budget. It subsidizes capital improvement. It it initiates us to do some improvements and some modifications, maybe. It's just, it's good system all the way around to to be able to gain a customer like that. I did share some concerns with Administrator Manny that this is so fast. Private industry is, of course, when there's money on the table, let's make it happen, no matter what it costs. Well, government, we all know is a little bit slower than that. So we're going to try to meet in the middle. I'm going to work with Administrator Manny and I appreciate Engineer Jim Johnson's help and his knowledge and his history with the city. I think the early numbers are that we can make it work and I hope we can. But really, just some easy, the easy numbers, a hundred thousand gallons a day. We have the potential to do that just fine with our current staffing in our in our system. And even better, so Hibbing Taconite wants to make it happen enough that they're willing to basically put up a hundred percent of the cost to tie into our system. So, I mean, with that, questions? Hope that's a good enough overview. It will be a fast. Administrator Manny will tell you, it will be a fast moving target to meet their aggressive goal, but anything's possible. And I think we should work towards it if we can.
Hey, Larry. Go ahead. Yeah, I just, I'll echo what what Larry has said. I was actually, the engineer called me and then I referred him to Larry. So I I I think we should try to make it work as best we can. I mean, what a great partnership we could have with that. And and what a great asset that would be coming into the city. So I just want to pledge my support for that program.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment for Larry.
Go ahead, Jim.
Not to offend anybody, but anytime Chiswick can stick it to Hibbing, I'm one hundred and ten that buy it.
I know you are, Counsel Varda.
Larry, like I said, you you know, I'm also glad that Administrator Manny brought up a couple of things. I mean, my concern would be more for the attorney that when we have that contract in hand, I believe, I believe first and foremost, we have to make sure we're taking care of Chisholm. You know, God forbid, but we do have fires. And we have to make sure that if for some reason we're taxed, that they're, we're gonna, that that contract somehow has to say they're gonna have to take second fiddle if in emergency situation. So that would be my only concern. And then the, well, that concern and any other one, I mean, we got to make sure that this is a sustainable thing for us. So Bill bringing up the the whole engineering part is good, that we have to have somebody look at, really look at our plant to make sure we can do this. So, but like you said, I mean, who knows what happened? I mean, we, we're probably going to have to make sure we have another pump that can immediately be changed or whatever. I mean, we got to be, you know, be able to do this. Once we do it, you know, they're gonna expend a lot of money. So we, yeah, so, you know, we have to make sure we can do it. That would be it.
Absolutely. And you know, when I get these things, there's always something. There's always something that we got to work through really hard. And, you know, like you'd said, there's, they have storage tanks. They have two, I believe, seventy five hundred gallon water tanks. So they can take and it's going to be a constant draw. They have, they're gonna need no water for fire suppression. So there won't be any surge draw. Say they have a fire, even if we have a fire, but they they do have the ability to not take for a while if we need them to. You know, we'll have the, we'll have the hot phone where we can actually get a hold of somebody in the after hours if we had to them types of things. We haven't really had that, you know, there hasn't been that that feeling yet that we can't make it work, which is good. Is it going to happen? Well, we hope it does. If it does, great. If it isn't, well, it wasn't meant to be. But all signaling, all things now are signaling that it could work and it's going to take a lot of work on both ends to make it happen, but I think we could. And but all those things are great. We do need the engineering. I know Administrator Manny and Jim Johnson were on it today. Now, we're we're way ahead of the curve where we were this morning, as we are right now. I have learned that we are permitted for six hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. And we're taking out less than three hundred thousand right now. So that potential is good. It's not like we're sitting right on the bubble, you know, where we'd have to ask for more. So there's some engineering there and we're going to continue to work, work forward with it.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Campbell.
All right, Trace.
So Larry, one of the things maybe we need to look at is when we do go into like contract negotiations, whatever you want to call it with them, that maybe they provide us to hose us some spare critical parts that we've that we've identified or whatever to keep to keep the plant up and going at all times. I mean, this is going to be something huge that if we supply water for them, that they have the water, because that's, I think it's going to be their processed water. I'm not sure, but I know that it's going to be critical for them. So something we need to look at.
Absolutely.
That's all I got. So you're going to keep working on it at some point. It'll be in front of us, I'm assuming.
I think so. And I think with Administrator Manny's help and Jim Johnson and everybody else involved, I appreciate that. You know, all the way up to our senior employee, Bruce Matic. We'll bring it back to the council, but I do want to counsel, I do want to alert the council that their timeline is fairly aggressive. And I just, I just want you to know that, that I don't think it'll be dragged out into next year, into next summer. It's, their fairly aggressive timeline is beginning of the year. So.
All right. Thank you, Larry. We'll move on for now. Jim Johnson, resolution ten twenty dash seven seven, St. Louis County Cooperative Agreement that we do every year.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think most of the information is in your council packet. It's a form that is prepared by St. Louis County. It's a program that we've been participating in for a number of years now. And I think what it is, is authorizing the city to enter into the cooperative agreement. This year, Larry needs some aggregate crushing done. So that's included. That hasn't been there before. But then it's just our crack sealing and chip sealing programs. And in your packet is the maps and the forms indicating where we plan to do most of that stuff. Most of it is right in the downtown area. And in the crack sealing, we're looking at the city parking lot behind is it Tom and Jerry's? The city parking lot as well as the parking lot down by the curling rink and the ice arena. And then probably looking at those where we're doing crack sealing this year, we'll do the chip sealing next year. But I would be happy to answer any questions, but would recommend approval of the of the cooperative agreement. Thank you.
Jim, I have a question for you. This is Counsel. When we do the, how do you say that? Crush rock? The crushing of?
Yeah, aggregate crushing.
Yes. Can we make sure there's no rebar this time around?
This is taking it directly out of a pit or something and it's rock, it's pure rock. There's, it's not recycling at all, April, and this, and this is done at by a county contract. They put it out for bid. They do all the plant specifications, bidding, supervision and so forth. But it's virgin, it's a virgin rock that is crushed up to a certain gradation. And not our, not our reclamation or our recycling that we do of our crushed concrete by tuminus.
That's great news. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Must have got some of the phone calls we got. Jim, so what's, I mean, I'm looking at the different forms, you know, that you got here. What, I mean, how much are we spending here?
Basically, what we'll be asking for in the budget, as Larry and I've worked at it last year, you provided us last couple of years, actually, fifty thousand. Last year, we spent fifteen thousand of it on the crack sealing and thirty five thousand dollars on the chip seal. And we did, oh, Sixth Street Southeast and then on sec, First Street or Second Street Southwest, down near the business district where they put down the chip seal and then they spray it with what they call a fog seal over the top of it. So that's kind of the same thinking that Larry and I have this year is to spend about fifteen thousand dollars on crack sealing and thirty five thousand dollars on the seal coating process, assuming we get the thirty five, or excuse me, the fifty thousand dollars in next year's budget as well.
Okay, good. Did we get a motion yet on this?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make that motion. Resolution number one zero two zero dash seven seven.
Thank you. Is your second for that?
Support.
Ordered by Counsel Lance. Motion was made by Counselor Thornton. Any other discussion? Margaret, take a vote, please.
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton.
Aye.
Counsel Vaki.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Good. That motion passes. Thank you, Jim. We'll move on. Gary Showquist Consulting Proposal out of the EDA.
All right. Well, I don't think I need to beat any more of the drum than what we did already. So Gary is looking for a consultation contract for ten thousand dollars. The one thing that I will ask Bill to to jump on here and talk about is the funding portion of it. It does say in my memo that there is enough money left, even though we've already spent some of the money that was allocated to the EDA coordinator position. And Bill can verify that, that that amount of money is there for us to use. And I do think it's important that we get it done because he's kind of the missing piece of the whole redhead thing. So.
Bill, you got some hidden money there to use yet?
What Counselor Vaki is referring to in our in our budget under economic development, we were budgeted as if our economic development coordinator was hired as of January first of the year for the whole year. So there is economic development fund budget for the year is about a hundred and twenty five thousand. And our economic development coordinator came on board middle of September. So there will only be three and a half months versus twelve months. So there there are additional funds in the economic development budget for Mr. Showquist at the ten thousand. Now, we've already committed just for a refresher, some of the money that was committed that will also come out of the Economic Development Fund. The that old sun media for the videos that the Discovery Center is doing over at the redhead and around the community. On the contract for Mr. Cook, that Attorney Lindsay is working on for forty thousand. And then this would be ten thousand. So that would be about eighty thousand. And then, so so there still is funding available in this year's budget. One thing, though, that I think as a point in, on page thirty seven in the packet, on the bottom, it talks about the scope of work. And earlier, there was a conversation about Mr. Showquist continuing on into next year. And when I read on his proposal, he he talks about beginning whenever this proposal is accepted and continuing through December thirty first. And the fee for that is ten thousand to be paid to him by January second. So when the discussion then carries over to into next year, I believe that would be probably a different contract if I'm reading. It goes, if the council's approving him starting now, what he has in here, unless Counsel Vaki, unless there's some conversation that I'm not aware of. I'm guessing if he's going to continue on past January second, something would need to be put into next year's budget to cover whatever that would be. Is that a fair statement?
I honest, I don't believe so. I actually think that that's ten thousand dollar flat fee for his entire services. I need, we'll have to clarify that with with him when the contract, before the contract is signed. But my understanding was he was still going to do the services because we asked him to extend the deal, but the fee never changed. It was ten thousand dollars for his services altogether.
Travis, Travis, this is Counsel Campbell. Then that second thing that we got from you for that scope of work, it says it goes through October thirty first, twenty twenty one for this proposal fee of ten thousand.
There you go. Thank you, Tracy.
So that we got, so I believe that's good through ten twenty, ten, October thirty first, twenty twenty one, that ten thousand dollars from what I'm reading.
If I also, I believe, you know, it's through these four components that he's seen through fruition. And he's also working with, MDC has also hired him to hire Gary to work with them. And, you know, this is, this is an art piece of the puzzle that is just very important, I think, with everything we have going on.
Counsel Campbell, where did you see the October deal of next year?
Mr. Mayor, we were sent an email. Was it today or yesterday?
Okay.
From Travis, I believe.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, I just just a concern, we should try to, you know, I I think that it sounds like, from what I heard Travis say earlier, the concern was we might be trying to push this so through too fast. We're just trying to extend it out so we make sure that people have time to get involved with this process. The process ain't going to change. He just, the EDA seems like they just feel it needs to be a longer process to do the same thing. Would that be a correct representation?
Sir Mayor, if I, if I may, I'm I'm going to, I'm going to apologize to Counselor Vaki and to the council. Because Counsel Campbell is is correct. Counsel Vaki did send out an email actually on, it was actually on Saturday that I'm looking at, that was the revised proposal. So this came out after the council packet. And it does say in that email that it's revised, the scope of work, beginning whenever this proposal is accepted and continuing through October thirty first, two thousand twenty one, for this proposal fee of ten thousand to be paid. So that is, that is my error. I sincerely apologize, Counsel Campbell. Thank you for the clarification.
So that's the one we're on proof tonight.
Correct. It's the, it's, yeah, it's the one, there's a revised one that was sent out by Counsel Vaki on Saturday, October tenth at eight forty eight P M.
Okay, good.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Margaret forwarded it.
All right. So, you know, I think this is a great thing tonight here. The EDA has finally spent all our money. But I mean, the final piece, I think this, I mean, this guy's resume, if anybody can get us up to speed, it would be, you have to believe it was him. I thought he would look older than he does. But that entertained a motion to spend that ten thousand dollars and get Gary.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Travis or Adam or anybody, is this the same guy we okayed last meeting for a bunch of money? of money?
No.
Oh, no.
So, this, Gary's gonna work specifically with the Redhead, the businesses, to help them get ready for the Redhead Trail. John Michael Cook was hired as a, to come and come up with talking pairs and a layout for future economic development within the city, with building off the, you know, the Redhead, but not, you know, that's a separate piece, you know, including that, but it's all gonna be focused on Chisholm, Gary's just.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go, go ahead, April.
Sorry, for, for you guys, so, you guys said that he is contracted through MDC, can you guys tell me a little bit about what he does for them?
Same thing he's gonna do for us, except he's doing it specific to MDC, which is why it was very important that we get him to do this for the businesses in Chisholm, and one of the big selling points for me was the agreement that he would meet weekly with Stephanie, and that Stephanie would be involved in his meetings at MDC, so that the city is always involved and always in the room when they're making decisions.
Thank you, Travis.
Yep.
Counsel would be looking for a motion to hire Gary Shulquist and prove his consulting proposal, with that extended to October twenty twenty-one.
So I will make that motion to hire Gary Shulquist through October twenty-first for ten thousand dollars, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one for ten thousand dollars.
Okay, again for that?
Second.
Okay, we have motion in the second, further discussion? Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton.
Aye.
Counsel Vaki.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, okay, that motion passes, thank you, Travis, last item under you, shop local Chisholm promotion, bringing it back again, try it again?
Yeah, so, this was actually submitted to, to Margaret, and she asked me if she could put it under me, which is fine, so, the chamber, it wants to do exactly what they just did, exactly the same, the price is exactly the same, the first round, we used COVID expenses, I assume that would be the case this time, I actually didn't know this was being submitted right away, so, that's all I can tell you on my end.
If, I got a question, not for you, Travis, for Bill, more than anything, Bill, so there's a second pot of money that we have to start discussing, right? Some matching funds we had or whatever at some point?
What, I think what you're referring to, Mayor, is the I triple R B grant, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant, of which we had to match, it was a one of four, so we had to put in thirty-one thousand two fifty, but those, that money is more in the form of loans, and it's, it's possible, and I say the word possible, that those loans, they may be forgivable loans, but those are loans, they're not grants.
Okay.
Little, little different pot of money that Stephanie will be working on, and just to recap, that was written a third for COVID-related expenditures, a third for current business retention and expansion, and a third for new business development and expansion, so that grant goes through, I believe it's the fiscal year of the state, which is the I triple R B, which goes July first through June thirtieth, so you are correct, Mayor, there are additional funds out there, but there are, in looking at the Chamber Director, Shannon Kissel Roach's letter on page forty-one of the packet, in her second paragraph, she talks about due to the popularity of the promotion, she was hoping to run it again for Christmas shopping, and that she would bill the same amount to the city, which is seven thousand two hundred and fifty, by the November fifteenth, the date required for the CARES Act funding, so earlier when I mentioned that, you know, we had about forty thousand dollars left in unallocated CARES Act funding, this is, would be round two that would qualify for that as long as expenditure is made to the chamber by November fifteenth.
Okay, well, I think this would be a great thing to help our community again, so I would entertain a motion to use, use another seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars of our COVID money to continue this program for the, the holiday season.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Counsel Campbell made the motion, Counsel Fulton seconded that, further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that the first round, I had feedback from around the country that, in around state, country, people are very impressed with what we're doing in Chisholm, and a lot of places are jealous about how active our community is, so I'd just like to say thank you, Shannon, and great job to everybody involved.
Okay, Margaret, take a vote.
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton.
Aye.
Counsel Vaki.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, okay, that motion passes, thank you, Travis. Adam, resolution number ten twenty dash seven eight, accept MBFTE grant for the fire department for training grant.
Yes, that's exactly what it is, every year, the MBFTE has a lot of money through tax dollars to spend and reimburse fire departments and facilities, so we just need to approve this to accept the five thousand dollar grant for our department.
Hey, looking for a motion to adopt resolution one zero two zero dash seven eight?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to accept that grant.
Motion by Counsel Varda is her second.
Support.
Further discussion? Every little bit helps, that's what we know, right? Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton.
Aye.
Counsel Vaki.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, okay, that motion passes. Resolution one zero two dare, two zero dash seven nine, appoint Christmas Susie as fire chief. It's a good letter from Adam with regard to what the fire department has done since our last meeting, but I'll turn it back over to Adam.
So on Wednesday, we had a meeting, a meeting amongst the fire department members, where we kind of discussed what our future's gonna be and the role it's gonna take, you know, our officers kind of met and they formulated a plan, and it was echoed by the members of the department that, it was unanimous that everybody believed that our succession plan should be Chris up to chief and, you know, move our officers up from there, but, you know, Chris has the full support of our department and the excitement to see him come in there and take on this role is, everyone is very enthusiastic, so. I will make a motion to adopt resolution one zero two zero dash seven nine to appoint Christmas Susie the Chisholm Fire Chief.
Support, her second for that?
Support.
Counsel Varda.
Varda, further discussion?
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counsel.
I just wanna let everybody know that I did speak to Mr. Masusi today, I had a nice conversation with him, and he seems to be really on board with everything, and he is willing to do trainings and such for paperwork and, and things like that, and he's been on the fire department for quite some time, and I respect that and thank you for the conversation, Mr. Masusi.
Thank you, April. Adam, you know, I don't want to beat this to death, and we got a lot of things to talk about tonight yet, but just, you, you, you were part of the meeting, obviously, as both a firefighter and a council rep, let me talk a little bit about that conversation, obviously I had some conversations with Christmas Susie myself, but I know there's some things that they really want to change with trying to get everybody more involved, we're looking for firefighters, can you just talk a little bit to some of the, you know, the, the changes they hope to implement down there or?
Yes, no, absolutely, you know, and kind of, you know, I'm not, our past is our past, but going forward, we have a lot of enthusiasm about getting more individuals involved, it takes a lot of people to run a fire department, and it, and it should, and everybody has a role and everyone needs to know what their role is, and that's the point of your, you know, your leadership, everybody has to be involved in the communication is what everybody is excited for, we definitely have been kind of stagnant through COVID with our training, people are getting kind of worried, you know, we're on the outside looking in, we're first responders, we are, you know, the first ones to act in the community, so we have to be cognizant of what's going on, but we act, we have to be very proactive also, what we do, people, you know, if we screw up, people can die, so it's very important that we get that aspect, another thing is, we are short on members, we need to look at hiring, we have been kind of stagnant again on hiring, we haven't looked anything for over a year, I know we have some applications, so anybody in the community who had applications, we are going to be reviewing them once we get our COVID plan up and running and we're able to meet, we're very excited for that, we have a couple of members, that COVID really kind of hindered their training, their fire one, fire two, they're coming on two years, happy to say that they should be doing their testing within two weeks now, to get certified, and that means that they can go inside a structure that is on fire, a little more training involved for that, but, yeah, there's a lot going on and a lot that's going to be flowing here in the next few weeks, so you're probably gonna see a little bit more of the fire department, and like I said, it's just, we're gonna progress through this, you know, things are gonna change, we all have a learning curve to meet, we have the facilities, the nearby agencies, Hiving has already reached out and said that they will help us stay in trainings that we need, you know, they're doing a lot of trainings as it is, and, you know, they're willing to have us over and see us and train us, so it's.
Thank you, thank you, Adam, all right, we do have motion to support to appoint Christmas Susie Fire Chief, any other discussion?
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor, just a quick question.
Go ahead.
So, when we put the package together, you know?
Yep.
Wouldn't we accept a resignation before we accept an appointment? If we're doing this the right way?
Talking about that, I thought that exact same thing, but he resigned publicly, so the resignation letter is a formality at this point, in my opinion, but you are correct, that is, that's a great question. Brian, would you concur with that?
I would, Mayor, so long as we have a letter that we can act on, I think that, you know, the, the form over the substance, and I think that we're okay to proceed.
All right. Thank you, Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton.
Aye.
Counsel Vaki.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
No.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, okay, that motion passes, congratulations, Chris, I see you're still on here.
Congratulations.
As part of this resolution zero, or one zero two zero dash eight zero, they also want to shift everybody up one position, Adam, you want to talk to that just for a second?
Yeah, so, you know, and obviously, your succession plan, that's how it's supposed to work, you know, your, you know, your outgoing chief is supposed to be training, your assistant chief, assistant chief is looking down, everybody's looking up to what they're learning, you know, captain, first captain, first lieutenant, second lieutenant, so we are planning on moving everybody up, you know, so everyone's just gonna move up one position, we're gonna have an open spot for the second lieutenant, once we have that, we do follow the city's hiring policy, where we will, we will have a committee together, we will open it up for applicants, you know, within the department to, you know, put in, for the second lieutenant spots, we will look at training, your attendance, your, your, just basically, your paperwork says it all, and then we'll have an interview, and we'll go through and we'll appoint that position, but for right now, we're just looking at moving everybody up to where they should be so we can get onto the next phase.
Also, I think to adopt resolution one zero two zero dash eight zero.
I'll make the motion to, to adopt that resolution.
Motion by Counsel Varda is her second for that?
Support, set, support, oh, go ahead.
Awarded by Counselor Lance, I believe, counsel, further discussion on that item? Okay, Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton.
Aye.
Counsel Vaki.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, okay, that motion passes, thank you, Adam, Bill, State of Minnesota, twenty twenty CARES Act grant, county municipal agreement.
Mr. Mayor, counselors, items one and two are tied it together on an item that we talked about earlier, on the CARES Act funding, there was approximately the one thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars of expenditures identified by the consultants that talked about moving into the grant, which is actually item number two, item number one is the county sent out the agreement, which is in your packet on page fifty and fifty-one, so it's the state of Minnesota, going through St. Louis County with CARES Act funding, so it's a municipality agreement, so, looking for approval for the municipality agreement between us and the county, which will allow us then to accept the grant, which is item number two under me.
Okay, counsel, to approve the.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Campbell.
Counsel Campbell made the motion, approve the agreement, is there a second for that?
Second.
Varda, seconded that, I need other discussion? Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton.
Aye.
Counsel Vaki.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, okay, that motion passes, second part of that is to accept the grant itself of two thousand one hundred eighteen dollars, to assist expenses to help ensure health in our election.
I'll make that motion for resolution number one zero two zero dash eight one.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Support.
Motion by Counsel Fulton, seconded by Counsel Vaki, further discussion?
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton.
Aye.
Counsel Vaki.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, motion passes, next one, amended COVID nineteen plan for the arena, these things have gone through with a fine-tooth comb with the attorney and administrator, so I'd entertain a motion, and then, I'll let Bill chime in after we get a motion.
Make the motion.
There's a second for that? Motion by Counsel Vaki, supported by Counsel Lance, Bill, anything you want to add to this other than it is what it is, it's amended?
That's meant is updated, Mayor, to account for current regulations for the arena, so it's an updated amended plan.
Okay, there's nothing else, counsel? Margaret?
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton. Aye.
Counsel Vaki.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, okay, that motion passes, next item is a COVID nineteen plan for the curling club, this is new, but once again, it goes through the attorney before it gets to us, so if there's no other discussion, I'd entertain a motion to approve the COVID nineteen plan for the curling club.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Counsel Vaki. Or Campbell?
Yes.
Further discussion?
Counsel Lance.
Aye.
Counsel Fulton.
Aye.
Counsel Vaki.
Aye.
Counsel Varda.
Aye.
Counsel Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, okay, that motion passes, Chamber Commerce Trick or Treat COVID nineteen plan. Chamber Commerce Trick or Treat COVID nineteen plan. I entertain that motion.
Mr. Mayor, can I just quickly talk about this quick? Just so the people at home know what's going on.
Yep.
So the COVID plan for Friday, October thirtieth from three to six, it's called Lake Street Trick or Treat. And what they said in here is stay home if you're sick, participants should wear a mask and social distance. If Chisholm School District moves to the distance learning model, the event will be canceled. And so, and there's also information to pass, passed along to the businesses. They also said that candy or prepackaged treat bags can be either arranged on a table inside or outside of this establishment. So participants can easily grab them without touching other treats or treats can be handed out if the worker is wearing gloves. And I'm pretty sure face masks as well. If treats are placed on the table, please clean and disinfect this and door handles, railings regularly. And clean and disinfect high contact areas regularly as well. And so, so just for the folks at home, know that if the distance learning module comes to, the event will be canceled. And I would like to make a motion.
Thank you, Ed April. And motion by Counselor Fulton, second for that?
Support.
Supported by Counselor Lance, no, Vaki?
Vaki.
Vaki, okay. Further discussion? We're all hopeful to have it for the kids. Margaret?
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Last item under Bill, curling club beer and wine liquor fee. I'll let Bill talk a little bit about this because this is new to us and it's new to the city.
And it's new to me too, Mayor. I had to reach out to Police Chief Manor to ask what we really needed to have here for the council to approve. And what, what Chief Manor informed me is that the council needs to approve the fee. That it's up to the curling club to apply to the state for the license. So what the council is doing, or what, what I am recommending the council do currently, the fee for beer and wine license for the city, which by the way, no entity in the city currently has. There is not a fee for two thousand and twenty. Earlier this year, Chief Manor, Attorney Lindsey and I met and we're going to be bringing recommendations to the council here in the next meeting or two, because these, these fees run on a calendar year basis. And so I put in my memo that the recommended change for two thousand and twenty-one for beer and wine licenses from a fee of zero to two hundred dollars. So next year, in two thousand twenty-one, the curling club, if the council adopts the recommended fee changes, of which we've made, just looking at the sheet here versus current one, two, three, four, five, there'll be five changes that will be bringing forth to the council. And we, we met a while back on these, we just didn't meet on these, this was earlier this year. So, so per Chief Manor, the council needs to set the fee for two thousand and twenty, which the current fee is zero. And so I'm recommending approval of a fee of zero for two thousand and twenty, with the understanding that if the council does approve the recommended changes, that will go to two hundred dollars in twenty-one. And also important item, the last sentence in my memo states that being that the curling club is a city-owned building, will require the appropriate certificate of insurance be obtained from the curling club. And so we'll make sure we follow up on that. So with that, I'll entertain any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Bill, I have a couple and they're more for Brian and Vern maybe. Obviously this came about because three, two beer is kind of going away overall. But do we have some concerns that, you know, they're going to be insured? But I gotta believe they're not going to insure themselves over the summer. And if we sell them a yearly liquor license, it's going to be January through, when they take the ice out. And then it'll start again when they put the ice until the end of the year. Should this particular liquor license run different than every other liquor license? So it's a seasonal liquor license, should we be looking at that? I don't know, this is a question maybe for Brian. Maybe Vern has some opinion, Brian, thoughts on that? It's a little different than.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I can, the three, two license was a little bit different than a regular liquor license. It came after the, but it was still a year liquor license. Their liability insurance was billed through the year and they can suspend their liability insurance if they're not using it. But then if there was a event going to happen there, they could, you know, re-up their, that suspended insurance. But they do get the full coverage, what they need, that is approved by the state. They make application to the state for these liquor licenses, but the city actually holds liquor license and has final approval over them. And that's where the fee is important because if they don't, we don't have a fee established, they basically get it for free if we okay the license. But yeah, it doesn't really need to be seasonal, it doesn't really suspend, but they're not using it.
Okay. So there's no issue with having it be two different seasons, even though it's one license?
Right.
Okay. All right, that's just my thoughts. So, well, I think it's a good thing that, you know, they're trying to open it up for the year and they like to do that up there. So I would entertain a motion to, what do we got to do? We, we request all, allow them to apply for the license and get us all the appropriate information. It would be zero for until December thirty-first and then whatever we approve for a higher fee in two thousand and twenty-one, if we approve higher, right?
Correct, Mayor.
So, they entertain a motion to approve the liquor license pending all of that. Beer and wine license, sorry.
I'll make that motion to, for the curling club liquor licenses.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Support.
Supported by Counselor Lance, motion was made by Counselor Vaki. Further discussion? Margaret?
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Bill. My first item. Got a letter from Norm out at the Central Sanitary Sewer District that Ron Nova Selk's term was up. Let me get to the right page here, bear with me. And no issue with Ron, but he has served on there since the beginning of the, since the board was put together. I thought it would be appropriate to at least open it up for other applicants. However, he does need the name before the November meeting, so it can be reappointed for next year. So that's why it's such a, we'd be looking at it at our next meeting. So just what we want to do is advertise for this couple of weeks here. In addition, I'd like to advertise for the other three openings as well. We have one on the rec board, one on the HRA, one on the EDA. And open all three of them up for applicants to take up at the next meeting. So that's the motion I'd be looking for.
I will make the motion to post for all three of those positions.
Actually, it's four, but.
Excuse me.
I'll second that, Counselor Campbell.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Vaki, seconded by Counselor Campbell, further discussion? I hope I get another HRA member. The last one turned out good. Margaret?
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Motion carries. Except Fire Chief and Emergency Manager Bob Brown's resignation and send him a letter thanking him for his many, many years of service to this community. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor.
Um, I'd like to say just a few things, this is just my opinion. And are we going to read this out loud or do you want me to?
Um, you're welcome to, but then I'm going to respond to it because I don't, the resignation letter has nothing to do with what really happened.
Okay, um, well, can I say what I have to say first?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And this is just my personal opinion, has nothing against anybody, I respect everybody. So my notes I have here, before we take up the resignation letter, I'd like to say, I feel, I feel, making I statements, that this was handled in a poor manner. Finding out at the last meeting, September twenty-third, the things that the fire department have been going on since July, according to Counselor Lance's email that we got. I feel that, I feel that a meeting should have been made with the city council and Bob Brown. And another meeting should have been made with the city council and the firefighters to discuss personnel issues, since we don't have an HR department. But that is my personal opinion. And I can read, I will read Mr. Brown's letter of resignation and, Mr. Mayor, then you can respond. Effective immediately, I will be resigning my position as Fire Chief and Emergency Manager. I have been under pressure from Mayor Champa and Counselor Lance questioning my leadership of the department. I will not be able to manage the department without the full support of the council. I am seeking legal advice regarding how and why this was done. Thank you, Bob Brown. And, Mr. Mayor, you said we were going to send a thank you letter out to him as well, so.
Totally. So let me tell you what really happened in the meeting and you're welcome to ask Administrator Manny, who was the only other person in these meetings, besides Chief Brown and myself. Approximately a month before his resignation, maybe a month and a week, we had our first meeting with Chief Brown. Prior to that, maybe a couple of weeks prior to that, I started to getting, getting a lot of concerns from the firefighters. Not firefighter and councilperson Lance, but a number of firefighters bringing up some concerns about how the department was being run. I told Administrator Manny that I'd like to meet with Chief Brown to discuss this. Just prior to meeting with Chief Brown, I felt like I had no idea what I was going to even talk about because all I had was a few concerns. So I asked Counselor Lance to connect me with any firefighter that would discuss it with me, what's going on at the fire department. I spoke with thirteen firefighters, I asked them a number of different questions. And I wrote down, basically, I wrote down everything they had told me. I came up with about twenty items that they pretty much all agreed on. And one item that they all agreed on, which was that it was time to move past Chief Brown. We met with Chief Brown and I brought all these concerns to his attention. He actually thought we were going to be talking about something COVID related, I think if I recall what he said after. But I brought it all to his attention and asked him, I don't know what we're going to do. I feel like you've lost the department, I've talked to two-thirds of your people. And they all believe it's time for a new fire chief. Bill was there at the time and he kind of stepped in and said, you know, everybody, you know, this is a lot to absorb. We're, we're not trying to handle this tonight or today. But, you know, we'll get back together in a month or so and we'll discuss it. In that month, I, you know, started thinking if there's a way that I could ask Bob to just back down a little bit and let his, his assistant chief spend a little bit more time running the department. Because I really didn't know how Bob was going to solve these problems. There were some concerns that were brought to me. And quite frankly, the firefighters were going to bring, the next step they were going to bring it to the city council and ask for his review, which they have every right to. Jump ahead, we met with Chief Brown again, we had another discussion. I asked him if he had any thoughts. He actually did talk a little bit about a succession plan. And, you know, possibly letting Chris take more of a role. I think Bill and I both left that meeting going, okay, this might work. I then started getting a lot of concerns from the firefighters. Let me back up, we actually scheduled the meeting for a couple of days later to have Chris come in and have a conversation with the four of us to see if there's something here. In that couple of days, I started getting all kinds of concerns from the firefighters that Chief Brown would never relinquish that power to Assistant Chief Masusi. So I told Bill, we better cancel the meeting and have another talk with Bob. And quite frankly, I told Bob, I said, Bob, I, I looked right at him, I said, Bob, they want you gone, the fire department wants a new chief. That's what they want, it's not me, it's not Counselor Lance. I talked to two-thirds of them and there were more that wanted to talk to me after that I never got to talk to. I told him, I said, Bob, you're sixty-five years old, you've spent thirty-some years here, you've done nothing but good that I know. You've been my chief the whole time. If it was me, if I was Chief Brown, I would retire. I don't know that I would take this fight on right now. I said, you're welcome to, but I can tell you that that's what the firefighters intend to do next, is they want to bring this to the council. He looked right at me and he said, yeah, I, I, I don't see me taking this fight. I left that meeting thinking I was going to have him retire, have a nice party for him and we were going to move on with life and it was going to go good. And you've seen what happened at the council meeting. I did not ask him for resignation. I told him he's welcome to do either one, but I, I told him what I heard from the firefighters, right from them. And I spoke, I spoke right to them, so. You know, how it was handled incorrectly, I don't know what I could have done different. I was trying to figure out if this is coming to the council or if I could, if we're going to work it out somehow. And I thought we had worked it out, I thought, I thought, I left it in his court. Either you're, you're welcome to, you've been here forever, bring it to the council. If they want to bring it to the council, you want to fight, have at it, I'm not going to stand in your way. I don't have, I told him right to his face, I have no issue with him, he's been my chief the whole time and I don't have complaints, but I haven't had to work for him. So apparently there was a third part to this and he opted to resign. So. Bill, you want to chime in if there's anything different here?
I don't have anything different, Mayor, of course, I didn't speak to the members of the fire department, but yeah, you're, you're, you're very accurate on what you said, that, you know, you mentioned to Bob that if he felt he wanted to bring it to the council, that, that, that's fine, that was his choice. And then at the last meeting, he, he came out and, and resigned, so he elected that option.
Since I'm mentioned in this retirement letter and since Counselor Bolton has more questions or, I definitely respect your feelings and, yeah. I somewhat agree with you, April, I do. I will say, since I got on the fire department, there has been people with complaints, people with issues. They're smaller, some are smaller, some get bigger, some build than when they're not addressed. I felt like I was doing a disservice to my members, they bring issues to me, they might not feel comfortable standing up and bringing them towards Bob and having them addressed. So I started to advise anybody with an issue, with a problem, to write a letter, make a phone call, call your city administrator, call your mayor. Start a file, something to look over Bob Brown in February, something to review him out under, something to talk to the fire department and actually bring these questions and address these issues. Through those conversations and doing that, I did have three written complaints. Through those conversations and doing that, I did have three written complaints handed to me that we sent in. One of them was not something that could wait till February until his review. It was something that needed to be addressed now. So that was coming to the council now. I had brought that information to the mayor on September sixteenth. I met with Chief Brown outside the fire hall. I talked to him about some of the smaller complaints, I mentioned to him the other complaints, and I let him know that I had no other option as a city counselor, but to bring these to the attention of the council. He then resigned the following week. It was his choice to resign. He did not wanna talk about these issues with the council, with the public. That's his choice, and I will respect his choice, and I won't go in any further detail than that. So I will make a motion to accept Bob Brown's resignation from the Chisholm Fire Department.
Support.
Second for that?
Support. Counselor Marda.
Okay, further discussion. Margaret?
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Thornton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
No. Mayor Champa.
Aye. Good, I motion carries. All right, we have firefighter that left their town, moved to Hibbing. Katie Dablock, motion to accept her resignation and send her a letter thanking her for her time.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor, second for that?
I will support that. Counselor Lance?
Counselor Lance, further discussion?
I would like to very much say thanks to Katie. Uh, she came with the utmost enthusiasm. Uh, she came to trainings, she went to further trainings, uh, EMR, she had a really great passion for the department, you know, she, um, was a great member, you know, I wish it would have lasted longer, but, um, you know, as she says, life kinda brought her in a different direction. But, thank you very much, Katie, for coming onto the department and giving it your all while you were here.
Thank you. Further question? Margaret?
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Thornton.
Aye, thank you, Katie.
Counselor Vaki.
Sorry about that, aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Good, I motion carries.
Resolution 1020-82, appoint Larry Pervananzi as interim emergency management director. As many of you know, Bob served as our emergency management director, Larry Pervananzi was the assistant. Uh, Larry did not want to be, uh, you know, he, he, he wanted to stay as the, the assistant and have the city look for a, uh, a full-time emergency management director, but he would serve in this fashion, until we have an emergency management director, serve as the emergency management director. Um, the fire department is actually looking internally, I'm gonna just ask the council how they feel about this, but I believe we've actually had, uh, one of our police officers was an emergency manager at one point, I believe, uh, Dan Hager was as well, but, um, the fire department is actually kinda looking to us if we would like them to find another emergency manager within their ranks, or if we'd like to do something different, but this motion here is just to appoint Larry as the interim emergency manager at this point, um, which would raise his monthly wages a little bit as well. Uh, so I'd entertain a motion to do that first, and look for a second, and then we'll, we can talk about what we're going forward.
I'll make that motion. Counselor Lance?
Motion by Counselor Lance, is her second for that?
Second for discussion?
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, does this resolution, or whatever you wanna call it, have to announce its interim appointment? Because it does not, so.
Uh, no, because he would be, he would be the, uh, like, Brian can chime in if he wants, but he would be our emergency management director at this time. It's just if we find another one, he's gonna back, back down to secondary, that's, that was a verbal. Um, so he would, he would hold the title of being the emergency management, but it'd be for a, a term of, you know, till we find another one. So that would be basically the motion we'd be looking, and we'd wanna make sure we agree.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Brian, do we need to do anything different there?
Uh, I don't believe we do. Uh, my understanding is that it's Mr. Pervananzi's intent and his goal that this be temporary. That being the case, um, it, it doesn't seem like he would hang on to the position after a new, uh, a new individual was identified, and so I think we're okay.
All right.
And, and Mr. Mayor, as a point of clarification, as, if I may, in the, um, in the resolution, in the one, two, three, the fourth paragraph, um, it does state that this remains in effect until a qualified person is appointed to fill this position on a permanent basis.
Oh, okay, so it does say it. All right. Any other discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I know you just, um, asked about what the council should do about, uh, for the, huh, because this is just interim? Yes, sir. Um, so, do we need to discuss this at a later date, or what would you, how would you go about getting another person in there? Um, taking the emergency director management courses? So Larry isn't in this position for, you know, a long time, since it is interim?
If it was up to me, I would leave it in the fire department's hands to bring one forward to me unless the council tells me differently, then, then I would say we should discuss it right now.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Counselor.
I, I do agree that it, it should stay somehow within the city of Chisholm, you know, uh, employees, which kinda, there's always a fine line there, if, uh, the Chisholm Fire Department, Fire Department members are city employees or not, because, you know, none of the positions for the rest of the city are posted internally with us. Yeah, you like that, Jim? But, um, the, there is, the, the course for emergency manager is more two or three years, and, uh, we do have the training facilities available to the fire department to come and teach us, and if we have a member that is interested, once we find out the scope of work and the duties, they will come up here and work with us, and teach us everything we need to know. So I, I would agree that we should probably try to leave that inside the fire department, if there's someone willing.
Can we, um, ask for, uh, something in response to posting it internally?
Yeah, I mean, I, that's exact, that's the exact question I was wondering, April. Uh, I mean, I think we should. I'm, I'm not against of any, any, I guess, city employee, uh, I, I think we should keep it internally, but I, I mean, I don't, um, you know, somebody that has a number of years left within our city, be it on the fire department, the police department, or a city employee of some type, uh, I think they, you know, you know, what you need is an ambitious person that wants to take the courses and learn how to do this more than anything, so, um, you, you know, I mean, we can make this a two-part thing, you know, we point Larry here, we got the motion to do that, we gotta vote on it, but if we wanna do a internal posting of some type to get, uh, interested parties on this, uh, we could look at all of them, I guess, I, I'm okay with that. I'm hundred percent okay with that, because I don't, you know, um,
Maybe we, maybe we should write a resolution at the next council meeting to do just that, or else, had two separate motions tonight, then. What do you think?
Either way, um, you know, like you said, with Larry in that position, we're, we're, we're covered, so uh, we could wait to the next meeting, we could bring something forward to, uh, to open it internally for any city employee, and look at them all, put together.
I can try to figure out, um, from our training facilities, the scope of work to go along with that posting.
So let's, uh, let's do that. Bill, why don't you, Bill or Margaret, let's note that we'll bring this back as, uh, um, discussion on how we're gonna, how we're gonna fill that position, how we're gonna post for that position, before the fire department takes it up. Uh, we'll bring that back for the next meeting, and tonight we'll just go with, appoint Larry as the, the emergency manager as an, on an interim basis, and we do have the motions for.
So I have a question about that.
Go ahead, Jim.
So if we decide to post this internally, will the fire department be involved with that? Because we're not involved with any other internal posting, or they, they're not. I, I can't say we anymore, but they're not.
I believe I would include them in, on, I would fight to include them in this internal posting as well.
Okay.
I can only speak for myself, but, y, 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 you know, I believe it should be somebody, no, I don't, yeah, but, you know, I, I think in my head it should be somebody that's kind of in the emergency personnel area, police or fire, but, and that's not necessarily true either, so, um, I would think I would, I would, I would fight at the next meeting to open it up to anybody that's actually part of our city, and has actually uh, gets money, you know, is one of our employees in one way or the other.
Counselor, anything else to know? We'll vote on near resolution zero, or 1020-82. Margaret, go ahead.
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Thornton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
No. Mayor Champa.
Aye. Good, I motion carries. Um, this, the next two items, five and six, I think that we might wanna take them up together. I know Counselor Campbell would like to have a working session to talk about the city clerk treasurer administrator position. Uh, my thoughts on the whole thing would be just take this all up as once, look at that job description as we're trying to figure out how we're gonna proceed on filling Administrator Manny's position. So I'd be looking, trying to figure out a date to hold the working session. I think we need to do it by next week, myself. Um, you know, I'm thinking maybe next Wednesday or something to try to get a, uh, we also wanna look at a budget meeting as well, but we might wanna do these as two different things. Um, that's what I would do. I would recommend that we just talk about the position, how we're gonna go about filling that position, and look at the job description all as one meeting, and, you know, my thoughts could be hold it next week. I'm available all week at this point, so, uh, any night would be fine, but Wednesday seemed to work out, so. Twenty-first at six o'clock, let everybody eat dinner.
Works for me.
Gracie gets eaten at four, no, if she wants to, because she don't.
Just like I did today.
That's my, that, that, that's my twenty-fifth wedding anniversary, I will not be at that meeting if it's on twenty-first.
Well, a goal?
That thing works for me.
Twenty-first at six PM? We'll do that, we'll talk about the job description and how we're gonna proceed. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion. Counselor Campbell.
Counselor Campbell, second for that?
Second, and I have a question, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
When was the last time that this was updated? Um, the city clerk treasurer slash administrator job position description?
Two years ago.
If I may, Counselor Campbell and Mayor Champa?
Yes.
I believe it was 2016, so we're talking four years ago. Thank you.
All right. Good question. Might need to be updated. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Working session, the format of the meeting, you can do it via Zoom?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna have to, I guess. I mean, you, everything that you've brought to me, the attorney doesn't want us to meet still. Brian, would you concur with that?
Um, given, given the layout of our council chambers, it's probably safest.
In your center. I hate Zoom.
All right, we got a motion in support to hold a meeting via Zoom, I guess. Six PM next week. Anything else? Margaret, could you take a vote, please?
Mayor Champa, if I may?
Yeah.
Who reported that?
Maybe nobody. I think April did, didn't you, April?
Thank you. Counselor.
Aye.
Counselor Thornton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Hesitantly, aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye, because I won't be there.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Okay, moving on. Uh, schedule working session, budgets, 2021. I don't have a date. There's a lot of things on my calendar. Um, but we need to have one soon, we need to start talking to department heads. Wanna have two meetings next week, we'll have one on Thursday, we can include Jim.
Yeah, let's get him done with.
Six PM on the twenty-second? I got an HRA meeting that day, so I'll be busy from four-thirty to five-thirty probably, so. Another Zoom meeting on Thursday, the twenty-second. Six PM, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion for that.
Okay, motion by Counselor Varda, second.
Or?
Counselor Lance, further discussion?
I will not be there.
Okay. Bill, does that give us enough time? Come up with some initial plan here and what we're gonna do?
Yes, Mayor, the, the, the budgets are, um, pretty much, um, in order for your review, of course, there's some fine tuning and some tweaking and things that, uh, that we need to work on, and that's why, you know, it's a bit of a process between now and the truth and taxation meeting on December ninth. Um, but yeah, we, we need to get started and, and have the conversations the council wants to have with the department head, so, yes.
Are you ready to get this through, or are you just thinking like a few of them for the first meeting, and then we'll have another one?
Um, whatever the council would like.
What do you, how many different areas are we talking, like eight, ten?
Uh, pretty much, you know, most of the people are on, on this meeting here tonight, so, just some of them have, have more, uh, uh, departments than others, that's all. But I think for the most part, you know, most of the line items, I, I would say really eighty-five percent of the line items, I don't think there's any questions, you know, when you get into, you know, where the budget format's laid out with the actual expenditures for the last two years, when you get into things like, um, uh, you know, operating supplies, telephone, uh, those things are pretty much a given. Uh, the wages benefits are all tied in now to collective bargaining agreements and contracts for the most part. Uh, we know what the health insurance is gonna be, so, other than possible, um, you know, hiring, um, or items, you know, the personnel lines, there really isn't a whole lot of discussion there. It's more the, the bigger ticket items, so, um,
Couple hours we could.
I, I think we could at least go a first run through, um, the budgets, and then, uh, determine where our work areas are, and proceed from there.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I would think, and if, if Bill agrees, we could probably have, uh, in my opinion, the two best budgets done next week, the parking wreck and fire department one and one A, as far as I'm concerned in the city. They're pretty easy, both of them.
All right, so we have motion support to hold that me budget meeting next, uh, week, uh, the twenty-second at six PM via Zoom. There's no further discussion, Margaret?
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Thornton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Good, I motion carries. Uh, next two items kinda go together. Uh, as you can see, Veterans Day is on our November eleventh council meeting, so we can't hold it that day on the November twenty-seventh, twenty-fifth meeting. Um, it's actually the day before Thanksgiving, and people like to sneak away if they're going to relatives or whatnot. So we thought we should talk about both of these meetings. My thoughts would be to suspend those meetings as the first So we thought we should talk about both of these meetings. My thoughts would be to suspend those meetings as the first item. States and schedule them for the Tuesdays prior. I believe Margaret and or Bill have talked to the attorney. And I believe Terry as well to see if this schedule works for them. But. That'd be my recommendation, unless council feels different, would be, first of all, motion to suspend both meetings. And then the second motion would be to a schedule them for the previous days in both cases. So.
Motion to suspend both meetings.
Okay. Watch by Counselor Lance to suspend the November eleventh and November twenty fifth meetings. Is there second for that?
Second.
Second by Counselor Fulton. Further discussion. Margaret.
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye, can I motion carries? Look, to schedule those council meetings on November tenth and November twenty fourth, unless the council has different ideas, I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion, this is Counselor Campbell.
Okay.
Support.
Counselor. Varda. Further discussion.
I can tell you that I have conflicts both of these nights, however, I will do my best to work out so I can be there. Just a heads up, though.
Okay. Bill, normally we have to get things to you by Thursday of the noon, be Thursday the week before by noon, we're gonna have to look at Wednesday noon. Noon week, Thursday or Wednesday of the week before noon, right, probably to try to accommodate.
If if you want the agendas out a day earlier, if it's still okay to get them all Friday for a Tuesday meeting, we wouldn't have to change that. It's up to what the council, if that's enough time. I guess, I guess I would need or ask for direction. From the council. Are you okay with the agendas coming out Friday for Tuesday meeting, or do you want them on Thursday?
I think.
As long as they're not huge agendas, you know, otherwise if it's a lot to go through, sometimes I need that extra time to make phone calls and ask questions.
Well, they've all been small lately. What's this on eighty pages? Bill, let's just go with the plan and hopefully we got time.
Just stick with the plan, Thursday noon deadline, council packets on Friday, Tuesday meeting.
Yeah, we'll make it work.
Okay. I like that.
All right, we have motion support to hold those meetings on November tenth and November twenty fourth, which are the Tuesdays instead of the Wednesdays, so. If there's nothing else, I. Margaret.
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye.
Can I motion carries? We're back to the. Local emergency, we might as well keep doing it because it's, we kind of need to if the governor does. So we're looking at extending it to. Bill, why did we come up with November twenty fourth? The governor extended to what, like November third or something? Fifth or?
Mr. Mayor, he his extension is to the twelfth.
Okay.
So our next meeting after the twelfth would be. The twenty fourth, which you. No, actually be the twenty. Let's say the twenty.
Twenty fourth. As we just.
The next meeting would be the twenty fourth, correct? No, the, yeah. Twenty fourth.
All right, council had entertained a motion to extend our local emergency to November twenty fourth and less earlier canceled by subsequent action by our governor.
I'll make that motion.
Watch by Counselor Varda, seconded by Counselor Campbell, I believe.
Campbell, yes.
Further discussion. Margaret.
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Okay, that motion carries. Appoint committee to labor negotiate or L E L contract. Recommendation would be one council person, chairman or administrator Manny and our confidential secretary Margaret Gornick. Anybody want to be on that? If not, I'll always be on one. I haven't been on one for a long time. But if somebody wants to be on there, I'll be happy to allow them.
Why don't you take it, Mayor?
Why don't I take it?
Why don't you take it? I'll make a motion that we appoint Chief Manager Bill Manny. Mayor Champa and Margaret Gornick to the L E L committee. Negotiation.
Should, should we include the little, the little side note where we put in anybody else they feel is, oh, no, that was on the hiring, forget it. Okay, good. Thank you for that motion. Second for that?
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Lance, seconded by Counselor Vaki. Further discussion? Margaret.
Counselor Lance.
Aye.
Counselor Fulton.
Aye.
Counselor Vaki.
Aye.
Counselor Varda.
Aye.
Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Champa.
Aye. Can I motion carries? Last item. Annual review of our building official, Mandy Gally. Mandy has agreed to have her review done openly in front of the whole world to see. So she's here with us tonight. Just a few things, I talked to Mandy today and I asked her, I said, so you're thinking about sticking around? And she looked at me and says, well, what's that mean? I said, well, I don't know, I gotta ask the question. She said, of course I am, I love working here, so. So she's on here. The only thing that I suggested to her today when I had a brief discussion was that. I think we should look at on her next contract, I think. I think when she's reappointed in. January or February, when we actually reappoint her, it's 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 for one additional, she has one year left or whatever on her contract, but. I thought that we should look at trying to. Line her next contract up so that her contract runs concurrent with her reappointment, so. Her contract runs from January, like every January, December, like everybody else. It just happened to be, it's when she was hired right now, so that's why it started, so. But I thought if we had a, you know, if it was a three year contract to make it a three year and two months or something weird like that, so that we can get up, so we can line it back up, but other than that. Council, anybody want to start?
Start.
Mandy.
Happily. All right. Well, Mandy, I don't have anything but good things to say to you. You do a fabulous job for us. Anyone I talk to that deals with you. Says what a great job that you do and how easy you are to work with and going through what we've gone through the last month. That's all I can say.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, Counselor Campbell.
I I agree with what Travis said, Ben, you do a great job, you always, you're real thorough, you make sure your Ts are crossed and your Is are dotted, and. I've heard nothing but good things about you, and. Thanks for that and continue doing a good job for us.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Counsel, anybody else?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to echo, obviously, what everyone else said. Everyone's very happy to have you around, Mandy, you know, your pleasure to work with. I just, with everything that has been going on in the last month, I I think we do need to make it a priority with our. Building official to help our residents in town build. I think we got some hurdles, some old outdated ordinances. That we need to work on, but I just expect the person in this position needs to be engaging the public, you know, to utilize the properties that we have in this town. So I I think, you know, I I've had, some people who think a little bit more help might be needed, and COVID is a very tough time right now. But we were talking about trying to raise our tax revenue in town, and, you know, we got people fighting development of property. So those are things that we need to work on within our city, I think, but. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I look forward to at least four years of my term, so, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, something. Mandy, you are a wonderful person inside and out. You've got great customer service. You've always been there when I had, you know, questions to ask you or I needed information, you were right there. Just a phone call away or a text away, and you're like, I'm available, you know, so you're doing a great job. Continue to do good for the city of Chisholm. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. I really appreciate everyone's support. I feel thankful every day for my position with the city, and I'm I'm very lucky and happy to be here.
Mandy. You and I talked Thursday when I got my packet immediately, right? So you know exactly what kind of player you think that I think you are. But I'll reiterate what I said when we had our first review with old council. I'm telling you, the new council needs to give her a ten year contract.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
It's from a guy that's leaving, eh? Mandy, I'm gonna act like everybody else did. If I could find anything, I told you, I was gonna really try to find something, because everybody can improve a little bit. It would be just that I'm kind of a. What's the word? A stickler or. Or worse, I'll go with worse about. These dilapidated buildings and pigeons living in buildings and everything else, so I certainly appreciate that. You share my concern and you push these hazardous buildings, you push the. People that are having pigeons living in there, and if I could find anything, if I could find one little smidgen, you could even go harder on those. But that'd be a bother, you know, it's like, when I bring them up to you, you start the process with Brian, you know. Yeah, that's all I can ask. You know, there there's a lot to do in this town. It's amazing how many people just. Basically abandon their buildings and let them just go to to waste, and we got to deal with them, it's just. It's sad, it's it's really sad. So, you know, that, those are two of the big things, you know, there was a, when I was actually running for office, there was somebody that came to me. And told me that. They had a building that's been there for twenty years, they were trying to get. And I know that I came to you and said, you gotta get this down, and you already had it on your list, and you knew that it had been. About ten times the county was trying to steal it back and keep sell it, and it's like, no, it's gotta go, so. And I could tell you, those people are very happy that it got down, so. You hate to just be tearing down houses and not building any, but we're gonna have that discussion soon, too. But I appreciate what you do. I have no reason I wouldn't keep your own, so.
Thank you.
Even with the. Two thousand two hundred dollars more we're gonna give you to keep your own. Just kidding. Counsel.
Yeah, one last, one last thing, if I can, Mayor. Mandy, I was just gonna echo what what Mayor Champa just said. In fact, I was gonna ask you to. Get together with Stephanie, because one thing. On the E D A side that we have been discussing, and I am gonna bring it to the forefront, and I know it's on Adam's radar too, is housing. And some type of program that we can come up with for housing in town, so I I want you to be a big part of that. With Stephanie.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead, Counselor Campbell.
Mandy and I actually had a discussion today, didn't we, Mandy?
Perfect.
So it's on everybody's forefront, just.
Beautiful.
Yeah, some of the things we discussed earlier with that we were doing, you know, as a council and E D A to help our businesses and stuff. They're, they're, they're a little bit easier to do when you're a small community like we are. But, I mean, we have plenty of room to, you you know, I mean, I'd like to see Chisholm grow up into the closer to ten thousand, you know, I wish we could do that. It would give us a lot more tax base and a lot more to work from, so we really do need to. Try to figure out an area to try to promote housing in this community. I think that's one of our priorities, so I'm glad E D is looking at that.
I I think it's too bad that we can't somehow buy some of these homes, fix them up and sell them, you know, or just try to save them instead of tearing them down. I mean, I know we're not in a position right now to do that, but. You know, at some point in time, we can't keep tearing homes down either.
Right.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah.
And and really, to be honest, the last two that were on the demo application were burnt, and. Money can fix anything. However, do you want to put that much into something that isn't going to be worth that in the end? And that's the problem that I'm coming across. With most of these properties. So.
One of those was really hard for me. One of those was my grandparents' house, so it's kind of sad for me to see that getting torn down, but. What are you gonna do?
It is, it's, it is sad, and a lot of them have gone through seasons without heat, and at that point. They're, they're kind of to a point where they're not coming back.
Yep. Anything else for Mandy, about Mandy?
Well, you guys, thank you so much. I really appreciate everyone's support. I feel fortunate every day to be working for the city of Chisholm, and I really enjoyed it.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
All right, so we don't need to do anything with that tonight. We're gonna reappoint her next year. But she makes more money, does she look like she's a little richer today? Actually, she made it starting over one or something, I think it was, but. Anyway, council, how about next meeting? We got miscellaneous, I know we already have, looking at that. Emergency manager position on the next meeting, we're probably gonna have to schedule another budget meeting at the next one. I, yeah.
I got one thing.
Yeah, go ahead, Travis.
So since I won't be at the budget meeting, I would, I would ask, and I'll. Send everybody a memo too, but I would like to ask that you seriously take a look at this beautiful sheet that Jim Johnson made. For me about the mill and overlay for the city. I think that that is an investment that as a council, we strongly need to consider. Doing a mill and overlay that covers the majority of the city. I know that Jim has some concerns about. The, you know, the utilities and in doing that, which is, which is why I want to generate that discussion. But I really do think that this is an investment worth strongly considering.
Agreed. Yeah, it does, like you said, it's a. Somewhat of a short term fix, but it's it's the people that live it and drive them streets every day wouldn't would agree that it's a good investment. I could tell you that, some of the streets are horrendous. I guess with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All right, we have motion and second to adjourn, all in favor.
Aye.
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 I have, I have one thing to tell Margaret. Before we go.
Yes, Counselor Varda.
I like your bat, Margaret.
Come and visit at some time, fall is over.
Getting adjourned, everybody have a great night.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.